Good.
This is confusing.
All right, good evening. I'd like to call the December 3rd, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Uh, well, the only thing I have under my announcements is, uh, I wanted to give a shout-out and job-well-done to John Furno and the Highway Department. Uh, got us through our first snowstorm of the year, and the roads are looking good, and everybody stayed relatively safe. I know they put a lot of hours in on a storm that seemed to not want to go away. Um, so, good job to John, and as always, uh, he does a fantastic job keeping Douglas in pretty good shape through the winter months. So, is there anyone here for anything that's not currently on our agenda? Seeing is none, uh, we'll go right into the first item, which is road use for REV3 New England Triathlon and possible votes.
And Kevin is here for representing.
Come on up, Kevin. It's gonna be very easy for me to remember your name. So, tell me a little bit about the triathlon.
Uh, triathlon, it's, uh, with REV3, a company that's been around ten years. Uh, they've done races from like Maine all the way down south and everything. Uh, they did like the, uh, Old Orchard Beach Race, one in Connecticut they put on for several years.
Okay.
Uh, they do sprints, they do a lot of different activities. Uh, they went and, uh, came interested basically in Webster. Uh, the best of where the main course would be based out of, um, out of Memorial Beach down there. And, uh, what they were looking for was to use some of the roads in Douglas, uh, to come up through on Saturday and Sunday. On Saturday, it would just be like a real small section where you come off of, uh, Lower Gore Road, when you go by Indian Ranch.
Yep.
At the split, you keep going straight. It looks like that road maybe just might be a quarter of a mile, if that, in Douglas.
Okay.
Before it hits southwest Maine, and then takes the right and turns back down to Connecticut again. So, we just wanted to mention that. And then on Saturday and Sunday, it would be the longer races, the Olympic and the half. Uh, they come up sixteen to Cedar Street and take a right, and then cross southwest Maine, almost what the, uh, TDD Triathlon used to do, but just going in the, uh, opposite direction. And then we go all the way down to, uh, eventually pick up Buck Hill Road in Rhode Island. And so, it would just be like a, uh, straight shot along that road.
Nice.
You know, for it. And then they meant to go back into, uh, Connecticut, around Connecticut and stuff, then, you know, head back into Webster.
Cool. Didn't you say the next triathlon that came through, you were gonna run?
I did.
You got room for him?
Yeah, plenty of room. You can make teams, a lot of people make teams. You know, like one person might ride a bike or swim or whatever.
I mean, between the three of us, we just, we use physical fitness up here, so, we're ready to go.
Have you ever had an entire team of elected officials?
That's what I know of.
I'm in if these guys are ready.
Give you a discount.
Is that one of those, like, roads closed until we get a really good headstand on, and then go?
Might be closed for several days.
You're definitely gonna need medics on hand.
You know, how, how long is a Olympic triathlon? Do you know the details of that?
The, uh, everything's probably gonna, or the swim's probably gonna start at seven o'clock, so the Olympic and the half will probably be at the same time for the swimmers. And then, uh, probably around seven-thirty to nine-thirty, they'd probably be going through the roads, uh, for that. You know, the roads could probably still be open, because they're told, they're supposed to stay to the right, there's no drafting, they have to be so many bike lanes to try to keep people, you know, going and everything. And, uh, you know, there'll be marshals on the course, so they get penalized, which they don't really want, because if they're trying to compete for something, they don't want to be standing on the side of the road a couple miles down, waiting for five minutes to go by or whatever. Uh, littering, like their time penalty, if they're caught, you know, just throwing stuff intentionally. Uh, we have sweeps that go by if someone should break down, or someone has a problem. Uh, pick everything up, so basically, you don't even know if anybody's, you know, been there, uh, for it. Uh, any markings that get, uh, go down, that's all picked up and removed. Usually, they use tape for it, so there's no painting that used to be done in the old days and everything, so that comes up. And, uh, everything's just, you know, taken, you know, right away, you know, from it.
So, and I saw that the fire chief had no issues with it. We have the police chief here, you said no issues at that time, still in good shape with it?
And John Furno, Highway also.
John, who's sleeping, probably.
And no construction.
No.
That we, that we're aware of.
No construction.
Okay.
So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we welcome REV3 New England Triathlon to use the roads as outlined in today's packet and in today's discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Hope you have a good event.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, we have Chapter 61 resubmital, chase and possible votes.
This is, um, the same land that you had previously approved, or not approved, but, um, voted not, voted to waive your right of first refusal. Um, the sale did not go through, um, so they are resubmitting it. Um, everything is, is the same, and the packet is complete. Um, it was reviewed by the Planning Board Conservation Commission and Open Space, and they have all recommended that the board waive their right to first refusal on this also.
Okay. We have a motion?
I don't believe anybody's here for this. No, no.
I move that we waive our right of the Chapter 61. I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so that brings us to a request to negotiate a community host agreement for T&Z Inc. and possible votes.
Actually, Z&amp;T Inc. It was, there's a miss. Not me, it wasn't me.
I knew it wasn't you.
Oh, well. Matt.
It wasn't Matt.
What's his name again?
Yeah, come on up, please.
Isn't there a Z and every T and a T and every Z?
Absolutely.
How you doing, guys?
Good, how are you?
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening, we very much appreciate your time. My name's Brian Carney, I'm a cannabis consultant, I've worked with a couple of different groups all throughout Massachusetts, predominantly next door Knox Bridge. Uh, we're here tonight to introduce Z&amp;T Incorporated. Um, Aziz and Teresa, they're looking to open up a retail establishment at 93 Davis Street. So, with that, I would like to introduce these guys and bring it up to any questions you might have.
Sure.
So, if you don't mind, I, do you want to tell them a little bit about your background and in Rhode Island and what you're looking to do?
I'm Aziz Kustal, I came from Iraq, Illinois. I did a lot of work with the United States back home, so, under the terrorist almost class, so, the company brought me here, I came with a typically twenty bucks in my pocket. Uh, I love this country, I started from the bottom. Five years, I worked in a gas station for, with my cousin. I made the money, I opened a new store, I bought a license, I made a really nice business. Uh, now, we try to move to Massachusetts, do some business with you guys here in this town, we love the town so far, uh, you know.
He is literally the American dream story.
If you had the time.
I made it here and, uh, I'm serious now.
He brought his family over, he had to save his family, because not only did he work for America and it wasn't welcomed over there, but he also was Christian.
I've got some familiarity with where he's from, so.
Yeah, so.
So, I'd like to point out, though, that the liquor business that they opened up has been the fastest growing, and also has had absolutely zero negative marks against them the entire time they've been open.
We were just on, um, Channel 10 News for three days straight, and put in the Cranston Herald and the War Beacon as the number one most, the number one compliant liquor store in Rhode Island, not only in cigarettes and alcohol, but, and in lottery. And we also had, uh, the children come in from the high school down the street, and they did a whole sticker program that if you can't buy it, don't supply it. And we had the police chief there, and the TV station there, and all the kids come in, because they all know T&Z, they all know that we're very customer service oriented, but we follow everything to the letter of the law. Which brings me to, I did a ten-year stint with the state of Rhode Island as a supervisor for Rhode Island College, the DMV, and, um, the John Pastorori complex, Eleanor Slater Hospital. I was a supervisor, supervisor cook, dietitian tech to, um, at the college, I had forty-five-hundred students, a hundred people I had to supervise. At the state hospital, I ran the forensic, where I had to deal with the criminally insane and the psych boards. And I had to make sure that nobody could get, even down to a simple thing like, um, the, the medal on top of Yoplait yogurt couldn't go to certain wards, because they could use it as a weapon. So, we're, we're both very detail-oriented, and we follow the letter of the law to everything. And we feel that we would be a great fit in this business, because whatever the CCC sets down, that's exactly what's gonna happen. And we also, he said that, you know, we want to go from Rhode Island to here, because we want to get away from that hustle and bustle in a state that's not very conducive to business. Where Massachusetts is wonderful to business, but this town is, it's like a hometown, it's not that hustle and bustle, where we can make it our home, make it our work, and do what we have to do to survive, and also give back, because that's what we do. We give to the city of Cranston, we want to move on to someplace where we can actually settle.
Okay. And you guys are planning to move to Douglas, too? Like to live here?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great.
Absolutely.
Just remember all of us to vote for us.
Vote for us.
So, I can say I like-
I'd like to reflect, I'm not trained in votes.
You're the one that told me to ask that.
There's a phrase we haven't heard.
No. So, I have to say, I like hearing that you guys are the most compliant operators currently in the state of Rhode Island. I'm sure that does the police chief some good, too, if he likes hearing compliant.
And we've also worked very closely, closely with the police department, because we have so much foot traffic in our store, we have single-handedly helped them catch many people in other areas that were, um, shoplifting and so on and so forth. In fact, it's, it's the first place they come to between, between all the security system that we have, with the cameras, and how we know everybody, so the police know where to come when they need help.
All right, and you're looking at 93 Davis Street?
Yes. It's a, a little over two acres of land, which is fantastic, because we could put in as many parking spaces as you need to alleviate any traffic situations.
Oh, I like the design of the building.
We want to make it look like the town.
What's behind that, those acreage? Do you know?
From the area, it's all wooded.
Yeah, this-
It's all woods.
I'm just thinking about being landlord, that's all.
No?
No.
It's really in a good spot.
No, I'm saying, back here, if we needed to get into here, we'd have a bit more business. But that's for planning.
Yeah, planning can-
Go through that.
From what I understand, this property has already been through conservation, it's already been approved for a forty thousand square foot building, but we're not doing the forty thousand square foot building. We're doing just, we're gonna go lean and mean and make it look-
Fifteen hundred, maybe?
Fifteen, fifteen hundred square feet. Um, so that way, it leaves us plenty of area to, if we need to grow, and especially, like I said, to alleviate any traffic issues as, because it's gonna be, you, we all know that anything new has a two to, two to four week transitional period, where everybody's gotta get in there, feel it, smell it, taste it, see it, you know, not that they can, but, um, and then it, and then it dies down. But I know that the biggest issue with this kind of, uh, business has always been the traffic. And it's a beautiful road that's out front, it's got great, um, egress, because the property is so big, and we can accommodate, we could go up to seventy-five spaces if we had to.
And traffic, truthfully, is becoming less and less of an issue across the state, so it's really a non-issue.
Have any thoughts so far, chief?
I'm concerned that this time, as, as we move forward, we'll have to take a better look at everything, but based on what I've seen so far, I don't have any immediate concerns. Like they said, something new is gonna bring in a lot of traffic in the beginning, but it'll usually peters out after a couple of weeks.
And anything that we need, if we need to hire anyone, I'm sure they'll love the overtime.
All right. So, your initials, initially, what you're looking to do is just open up a recreational retail facility?
Yes. Twenty-one and older, that's it.
Yep.
That's it.
And then at some point, you guys are gonna grow and potentially go to a grow, grow, cultivate, or no?
No, they may grow just in the size of the building.
Oh, okay, grow. Sorry. Took that literally, and I'm like-
I thought that.
Grow, and I have bigger ideas what I want the building to look like, but I can't do that right now, so I have to wait. Only so it's more comfortable, you know, you know, because we, being that we're gonna be right now in the liquor store, where they're three hundred and sixty-two days a year. We just got our first day off on Thanksgiving from January 2nd. So, that means that we eat every meal, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, standing up, Monday, Tuesday, all the way through until Sunday. The only time we go out and enjoy ourselves is on Sunday at six o'clock. We sit down and have a meal where people say, "No, we'll get that for you."
It's gotta be a nice feeling.
So, with this, being that this is, you know, another controlled situation, um, we wanna, we have to be in it, we want to be in it. We're not one of those people that are gonna, you know, get it and walk away, no. If we're not in it, we don't want to do it. So, that means I want to be comfortable again, where I can do a little bit of, you know, cooking. Poached eggs in the microwave. Also, we have, because of, um, Brian brought up something that we didn't think of before that we have, we have in that plan, is we have a really most efficient way of getting people in and out, is to make sure that as they're coming through, where, as they, as they're checking in, we're gonna have the menu, and we're gonna have those, um, iPads right there, for everybody to be checked in, order what they want, go in, get it, and go. Just, it's just gonna keep-
Figured out how to maximize volume.
Flowing, flowing, flowing. I'm all about speed and accuracy.
And I understand now they're having people carded twice, once at the door and then once before you pay, too, so I know that's the new-
And they also have financial systems where the, the register is actually, you can set how many hour, by the hour, that it will count the money, put it in an egg, and drop it in the safe.
Nice.
That's even more safe.
All kinds of-
All kinds of amazing.
Banking's coming online, there's all kinds of-
Security, security, security.
New banking measures that are making the former issues non-issues anymore.
Yeah, it was the biggest, the banking was a big problem, because it was like pretty much an all-cash business, like-
It was for years, yeah, and they found some very interesting ways around it.
There's one bank in particular that is, is, is growing leaps and bounds, because they're also affiliated with all the different, uh, aspects of getting it in and getting it out safely and-
No, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna pull punches, I've been pretty straightforward about it since, uh, since it was, well, when they first started with the decriminalization of it, and now legalizing for recreational use at mass. I think it's, I saw firsthand what it did for Colorado, um, so I think that it's, the revenue that comes through is definitely, uh, helpful to the communities, obviously, to you guys as business owners.
Absolutely, absolutely.
People from the town.
So, and we like to-
Percentage besides the, you know, the, the hiring, there's so much more to give back than-
Well, I know we like to be business-friendly.
We can try.
It's not always easy, but we try to be business-friendly. So, and Matt included a host community-
Draft.
Draft, which I have looked, I don't see any issues with that, with what's currently in front of us. You read it over?
I took a quick look at it, yeah.
So, I, I mean, I have no reservations about moving into a community host agreement with them, have their legal counsel go over it, have ours double-check it, and then move forward from there.
We have two designated members of the board, right, for this?
Yes.
Hal and David?
Yeah.
So, I think the vote you want to take tonight might be to authorize them to go ahead and negotiate that agreement. That document, it's just a vehicle, it's amenable to change. It was prepared by Talim and Mead, so that, the attorney you've seen here, and has advised you on cannabis issues on other occasions, Kate Fedorov. She did not directly take some of the work that that firm has done for Oxbridge, she felt like Oxbridge had been a little bit inconsistent with some of the terms, some of the communication around some of the agreements, so she went to, uh, a different agreement she has worked out with Maynard. I think the principal things that we wanted to flag were, we wanted to give the business a chance to, to open and generate some revenue and cover their costs before we asked them for anything.
Yep.
And, um, that's the way that agreement was structured. So, I mean, that's all I've got for you, is that, you know, we could turn this around as quickly, I, I don't know what your timeframe is, where, where you see yourself as CCC, or the purchase of the land, what, what?
So, the, the land, uh, is in purchase and sale?
The land is done, the land is-
Land's purchased.
So, you have site control.
The land is all, it's in purchase and sales, and the land is actually contingent on the host agreement. We get the host agreement, we give them the money, they've already, they've already cashed the money that we've already give them, have given them. Um, in fact, we have to stop making payments ninety days from when we went from LOI, not even from purchase and sales, which starts January. In January, we are gonna start making payments on the land, which goes towards everything that we, because GBI is also doing the shell of the building.
Okay.
They can't do the inside, because the inside has to go through the CCC, and it has to be by people who are licensed from them, not anybody can do the inside. But GBI is doing the, out the shell, the septic, all that. So, we're already starting, we're gonna start paying for that in January. If you do not give us a host agreement and you turn us down, that's it, everything goes back. We, it, it's done. But it all started from the LOI. If you say, yes, it's done, then we go in the week and-
And of course, we need the community host agreement to apply, uh, with the Cannabis Control Commission.
Yes, you have to have that before you move there, but the, the CCC goes by you. If we satisfy you, then they're satisfied, the next step from there is just making sure that everything is where it's supposed to be, as far as the structure of the building and the, and the security of the building, and so on and so forth. That's what their next step is after you say yes. But your yes will determine whether we go and give them, just buy the, the property or out right now.
Well, I am inclined to make a motion that we have our representatives from the Board of Selectmen move expeditiously to negotiate a fair and equitable community host agreement with these folks.
I'll second your motion.
So, motion's been made and seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Oh, we can't wait.
We'll, we'll get everybody's calendars together and break the time.
We'll move as quickly as we can for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, yeah, because we have to stop making payments next month.
I understand.
All right. Appointment to the Council on Aging, Vincent, uh, Disban Monuments and Memorials Committee and possible votes.
So, the first item is the Council on Aging, um, with the passing of, uh, one of the members, uh, there's now an opening, so the senior center, or Patrice, would, uh, recommends that you appoint Kent Vincent, uh, to a full status. Right now, he is a, um-
Altine.
Full voting.
My brain just went dead.
Let me save you. I will make a motion that we appoint the, the chief as a full-voting member to the Council on Aging.
I'll second your motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You want me to attempt the second one?
How about if I go over this one? So, uh, the Monuments and Memorials Committee was established in 2014. Uh, Ron Tetral, the veterans agent at the time, recommended the committee be charged with the overseeing and planning, the planning and care of monuments and memorials in Douglas. Uh, and to advise the Board of Selectmen of the same. The committee was comprised of a member of the board, myself, commander of the VFW or designee, Dave DeLuca, um, chair of the Town Common Committee or designee, which was Pete Tetral, veterans agent, Ron Tetral, and the town administrator, who was Mike Kazinsky at the time. Uh, the committee worked on the installation of the cannons at the Town Common and the Michael Carter Memorial, adding the plaque at the square on Gil Boland Mechanic Street. Uh, Dave is no longer the commander of the VFW, Ron no longer a veterans agent, um, Pete Tetral has passed away, uh, Matt's the new town administrator. Any issues moving forward dealing with monuments and memorials should just come to the board as a whole, and, um, we're looking to dissolve the Monuments and Memorials Committee.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, and I saved Suzanne from coming to read that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, review liquor license renewals and possible votes.
It's me again. In the packet, are the, uh, I gave you the ABCC guidelines, just so that you can see that, uh, that all applications, renewals must be signed and given to me in the month of November. They were, and at the time I wrote this memo, I was still waiting on a few documents, I have now since received everything, so all applications are complete. So, what you will be doing is you are voting, uh, that all their requirements have been met, and then we send that to ABCC, because ABCC just automatically renews all licenses.
Okay.
I move that we inform ABCC that all our liquor license holder requirements have been met. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I do have one question, do we have any open liquor licenses?
We have many.
We have many?
We have many, so-
Thank you.
We have a few people that have, um, come to me because of, um, different people, well, there's one that's in the process of, um, thinking about selling the business, and then someone else has given up their license.
Okay.
And I have had people ask me that. The, the thing is, is if we were in Boston, and every single one of our licenses was, was issued, then they could sell the, sell them for, uh, a good amount of money, but we have so many that are available. The license basically goes to the property, it doesn't go to the business, but, um, they would, anybody can get a new license, so it, it's really a non-issue.
Thank you.
Planning on opening up that bar at your house now?
I don't know if I'd need a license for one in my house.
If you're gonna keep charging for your drinks, you do. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, approve minutes, impossible votes.
Motion to approve the November 5 minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Now make a motion to approve the November 18th executive session minutes and to retain those minutes. A second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's done. Your report, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, we received notice today from Maya that the water and sewer department was successful with their grant application for just about eighty-one hundred dollars, eighty-two hundred dollars worth of safety equipment, uh, so I'm thankful to Maya and to the department for putting together a good application. As you may recall, we are automatically winners of the property management, uh, grant, because Maya more or less told us that we'll be working with the Harvard, Hartford Steam Boiler Company, um, which makes sensors that track water flow in buildings, and I don't know exactly where that stands with the school department, but we've attended, Suzanne attended the webinar along with, was there somebody from the school department on that?
Uh, Courtney was, was also there.
Courtney was on it, so those sensors will be installed at, at Maya's expense, uh, not the town's. Residents will note a significant amount of activity, because we have several projects going on, the police station all at once. going on, the police station all at once.
We do.
We picked the perfect time for this.
Several?
Couple of weeks ago, it was sunny, and there was a breeze, and, uh, but we'll be replacing all the windows down there, and the, uh, heating and air conditioning system that we discussed last time we met, so people will see a lot of activity. It's just important to remember that the air conditioning stuff is all grant-funded.
Yep.
The windows was a, was a town meeting vote, and, uh, we'll be replacing the existing windows with much more energy-efficient, you know, weatherized, uh, new units, so, uh, we're expecting significant change in the, the energy usage of the department, maybe a little bit more creature comfort as well.
Yeah, the stuff they, they've been in the past couple of days, the stuff they put in, it looks really nice. It's gonna be good.
So, that's where we are with that, and, uh-
So you bundle up during install.
Yeah, exactly. Sorry about that, chief, but we are under time pressure to get some of these funds out the door, and we also just only have so much bandwidth for projects, we have a lot of grant projects underway, so. I think since the last time we met publicly, we also had our municipal vulnerability, um, grand session, if you wanna call it that, and remember that the purpose of doing the planning effort is to open the door towards infrastructure grant programs that are actually very substantial, and may be of great benefit to the town in the future. So that day-long session was held here, I wanna thank everybody who participated, and Chief Mignljanico was spokesman for one of the tables. A lot of thinking was done to try to predict what will happen to the town as times are changing around us. So, um, other than that, we've been very busy with the budget, and we're just trying to get the budget done very quickly this year, we have no reason not to, um, I'm anxious for the second quarter report on our health insurance, our self-insure program, 'cause I wanna hopefully see that our medical loss ratio is holding as low as it has been, which has been a very good sign so far, but, other than that, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else to report.
All right, so do we have any old business? Seeing as none. Do we have any new business? Well, I do see that we have some Boy Scouts tonight. Just, is this for a badge, I hope? Yeah? Was it worth it?
You get two for coming tonight.
Exactly. Guys all still awake? We didn't put you to sleep?
So-
We needed you out of the house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Is this for the, uh, don't ever run for public office badge? All right, seeing as there's no new business, uh, I would entertain one of Tim's eloquent motions.
Absolutely, I'll make a motion that we move into executive session for the purpose